Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting for Monday, January 11th, 2021. It is 6:05. Liz, roll call, please.
Liz, you're on mute.
Thanks, Niles. Mayor Morris?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. LaFabe?
Present.
Mr. Sheehan will be a few minutes late. Ms. Burnell?
Here.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Burks?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Here.
Mr. Willingham?
Here.
Mr. Collmore? Star six, Mr. Collmore.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Krishane?
Here.
Ms. Shadé Motapueyo? Samantha Brennan?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. All rise for the, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. First, I want to start off by reminding everyone pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. Also, just going over some house rules, we did take away the chat button, which is good because we shouldn't be typing up anything in chat. The other thing is that all individuals that are part of the school committee, including Dr. Alberto Vazquez Matos and Ms. Brennan and Ms. Puello, should be with their videos up at all times on the screen and muted. Obviously, the more that we can have people muted. Everyone else, if you could please have your videos off as well as be muted. And once something comes up that you are required to be up on screen, by all means, put your video back up. Another thing is, I know tonight's agenda item is something that is going to have a lot of emotions and a lot of, a lot of, it's going to be a lot of fruitful discussion. That is my hope. So again, as we're all here for our community, we're here for our students, we're here for our families as representatives of those on the, as school committee members, we are representative of our city and we're here for them. And we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible, be respectful. And when you're asking questions as well as when you're making a comment or you're responding to a question. So with that being said, I wanted to start off first with, is there any public comment, Liz?
Yes, Mildred, there is public comment. I sent it to you, but I'm very happy to read it. If you just give me a second to pull it up.
Do you want to read it? Do you want me to read it? I mean, it's, I know you've got to do like 20 things at one time. I just have to do a click.
Yeah, well, there's only three, but so if you don't mind reading it, that would be great with me.
Okay, thank you. So I know that, so we have three public comments that were submitted by three parents, but we also have Mr. McAndrew that at some point, I guess he's going to make his public comment. All right, so starting off with parent number one who submitted their public comment. And this is, and again, I'm sorry if I, if I don't pronounce the names right, I'm trying here. So Molly Pinkney. Dear Dr. Vazquez Matos and the members of the Holyoke School Committee, I am writing to express my concern about the plan to return to school in the hybrid model. I understand that remote learning is difficult for families, students, and teachers, but it is the model that guarantees everyone remains safe and healthy. With the positivity rate in Holyoke at 7.38%, it is not safe to put students and teachers in enclosed classrooms. As the rise in cases after Thanksgiving gatherings and Christmas gatherings have proven, putting students and teachers back in school will only cause more cases. I suggest waiting until teachers can be vaccinated. Teachers and students have become accustomed to working online. Rituals and routines have been put in place. Sending students back to school to only have to go back to the remote model when cases surge will be very disruptive to students' learning. I feel waiting another six to eight weeks would make the most sense for all involved. The health and safety of your students and your educators should be your number one priority. Sincerely, Molly Pinkney, parent. The next one comes from a parent, Sasha Delgado. Holyoke Public School Committee, I wanted to express some concerns I have with returning to school for hybrid learning. I fear we may be jumping in too quickly without evaluating the safety of the children. What guidelines are being followed? With the cases being 8%, is this not exposing the children more? I am concerned with the school hours. With no morning program, there aren't any options for working parents. What is the benefit of returning to school only two days a week, but still on the computer full time? There will also potentially be an increased exposure risk as these children will be in alternate care environments for three days a week. Personally, I cannot be an hour late every day without running the risk of losing my job. I am sure that there are many other families in the same position. I fear that having the kids sit separately in the cafeteria desks will make them feel more isolated. Are there any plans for recess? I feel the kids need some type of normalcy during their school day. Finally, I want to express how upsetting, upsetting it was to find out the survey we built out was used to determine our child's schedule. A survey is gathering for opinions, not making decisions. I found this to be very misleading. I feel that plans to return our children to school have been very inconsistent. And I do not feel comfortable with my children returning to school without a solid and detailed plan in place. Then, and I have a feeling this is going to be the last name that I'm really going to screw up, and I'm really sorry. And this comes from Marissa Oh-Rushaber. If anybody knows who that person is, maybe you could say their name a whole lot better than I can. But I'm going to say Maria B. She is a parent. I have two special needs children doing remote learning right now. One six-year-old with ADHD in first grade and one eight-year-old with high-function autism. I also have a two-year-old I'm taking care of during their learning time. I have always tried to be involved in my child's education and supported their teachers to the best of my ability, but it has been very challenging to do so this year. I'm pulled in three different directions all morning, just trying to keep them focused on their learning. And at times, my two-year-old has become extremely frustrated that he doesn't have my attention and can't play with his siblings. I don't feel that extending their school day in the middle of the year, in the middle of the pandemic, is in their best interests. Granted, when it is safe to go back to school again in person, their days will be longer, but they won't be at home with their toys, books, siblings. I have a feeling with the extended hour day, I may have to pull them out and homeschool because it's just going to be too much time on a screen for our family between school, therapy sessions, leisure times, et cetera. So those, and again, I apologize, Marissa, if I, I know for a fact I brutalized her name, and I'm, I truly apologize. But those are the three public comments that we did receive. And the next one that I have would be Mr. Pete McAndrew, which I do not see here. Have you seen him log in at all? Ms. LaFabe?
I have not. Ms. LaFabe?
Okay. So.
I'll make a motion that we leave public comment open if, for, even when Mr. McAndrew arrives.
So I do have a motion. Is there a second? So I have a motion and a second by several people. Roll call, please.
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Ms. LaFabe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Ms. Burnell? Ms. Burnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Mr. Collmore? Star six, me.
He raised his hand.
Okay, I just heard him. Thank you. Mr. Krishane?
Yes.
You. Okay, so motion passes unanimously. So when he comes up, if somebody, I mean, I keep looking and I'll keep checking back in. And at some point, we'll find a space to add him, to hear from him. So next on the agenda, student report. Is, did, is Ms. Puello from Holyoke High School Dean Campus here?
I don't see her here yet, no.
Okay. How about Ms. Brennan from Holyoke High School North? I did see her.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay. So, so last time I talked to everyone, I hope you all had a nice holiday. I said there was a student government food drive, so we did that. The last few days got cut short because the buildings were closed, I believe, from COVID cases rising. We also had a holiday celebration from the music department. Ms. Stewart and Mr. Todd did a virtual holiday concert. The students sang, played instruments, and shared their talent and some holiday cheer. That was last month in December, and now looking forward to January this month, there's going to be a new schedule at Holyoke High School and I believe all over the district. Instead of, my schedule was 8:45 to 12:50. We will now be on our computers from nine to three. Everyone is preparing for this as, we didn't have much of a say, but we are preparing for it. There also will be implementing a screens-on policy. So now, students will be going, will, will have to keep their screens on from nine to three. And the administration has said a good thing about this is we will be having a spirit week, the first week. So we're getting ready for that. And then midterm exams will be happening, unlike last semester where we did not have midterms because of COVID-19. So that's basically it. We're getting towards the middle of the year and we're preparing.
Thank you so much, and Happy New Year to you too. Hope your holiday was safe and, and somewhat exciting, right?
Thank you.
All right, I'm just looking down just to see if by any chance Ms. Puello came on, but I don't seem to see her. Okay. All righty, so moving on to student showcase, Dr. Alberto, no, nope, student showcase. Okay, thank you so much. All right, so that closes off. Now I pass it on to Dr. Alberto Vazquez Matos for communications and reports. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. With me this evening again is members of my cabinet as well as the Director of Public Health for the City of Holyoke, Mr. Goncalves. So I want to thank him for joining us this evening to address any questions the committee might have. So I want to begin kind of giving kind of an update on our return-to-school update. As many as are aware, we were, had, we did have a target date, a proposed target date of January 21st to bring back a group of students. But due to kind of the, the protocol and kind of looking at the data, we'd had to kind of delay the start. But I want to kind of give an update of where we are. And so this evening, I will be sharing a return-to-school update about planned target dates, the family surveys, the hybrid learning model details, the cohorts, and school hours and schedules. And so when we talk about the target dates, in reviewing the health metrics, next slide, please. In reviewing the health metric trends and reflecting on feedback from our stakeholders, we have decided to revise the reentry target dates. We believe this is in the best interest of maintaining the health and safety of our students, families, and staff. It is important to note that the target dates are not finalized. They are dates that we are planning for with the understanding that they might have to shift based on our ongoing review of current health data. We are revising the original target date so that our early learners will begin to transition into in-person learning in February. More details will be shared hopefully by the end of this week. We, we could, we continue to monitor our health metrics, partner with stakeholders, the Board of Health, and use data to inform our dates to bring more students back to school using the hybrid learning model. The family survey. Family input is critical to developing our hybrid model. All families have been asked to complete a survey indicating their preferred model of learning, hybrid or full remote. This information is being used to develop our school-specific plans. We know that remote learning is most difficult for early learners, so our staggered entry to hybrid learning will begin with our youngest learners first. Current planning is focused on pre-K to grade two. Currently, 661 students in grades pre-K to two are requesting hybrid learning or 46% of students in these grades. Here are some details for students in grades pre-K and K. Students who wish to participate in in-person learning will be assigned to Cohort C and attend in-person four days a week. They will be assigned an in-person teacher. Students who are fully remote, assigned to Cohort D, will be assigned a remote learning teacher. Here are some details for grades one through 12. Students who wish to participate in in-person learning will be assigned to Cohort A or B and attend in-person two days a week. They will join the class virtually on their remote days. Students who are fully remote, assigned to Cohort D, will join the class virtually with their in-person peers. In this slide, we have a graphic of kind of, kind of describing of what the hybrid model will look like. This slide provides more information about what the hybrid model looks like for all student cohorts. The schoolhouse indicates in-person, the computer icon, students who are in remote learning, and the synchronous session icon is the live remote learning. In addition to the surveys and the family input, we are, we have also collected input from multiple stakeholders, such as principals, academic departments, the teacher advisory group, the hybrid planning task force, to work on, out the exact details and format of the hybrid model. As communicated in my December 17th Holyoke update, in the hybrid model, approximately half of the students will be in school at a time. Students will participate in one of the following four cohorts within the hybrid model. Students in Cohort A will attend school in person on Mondays and Tuesdays and have guided remote learning on Thursdays and Fridays. Cohort B will have guided remote learning on Mondays and Tuesdays and will attend school in person on Thursdays and Fridays. Cohort C, students in preschool and kindergarten who have selected to participate in hybrid model will be assigned to Cohort C and will attend school four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday. Cohort C will continue to include the current structure for student groups who are already attending school in person four days a week. Students at the Transitions Academy, the Dean Campus, and some students who are receiving specialized instructional support. Cohort D is for students who will continue to participate fully in remote learning. Wednesdays are full remote learning days for all students assigned to Cohort A, B, or C because deep cleaning will occur in all schools in the districts on Wednesdays. The new school hours and schedule. In the December 29th Holyoke update, we provided information about the newly adjusted school day, starting on January 19th. It will be structured based on the uniqueness of the school, the program, and grade. In response to formal and informal feedback from students, families, such as LPAC, DPAC, S-PAC groups, and teachers, as well as the updated DESI guidelines, it would allow students to be more engaged with their peers and teachers. We'll offer small group instructions for additional support and include time for necessary breaks and opportunities for asynchronous and synchronous live instruction learning time. The original school schedule included synchronous learning from 8:00 AM until noon and asynchronous learning for up to 2.5 hours daily. The schedule provides students with six-point hours, hours, sorry. The, the schedule provided students with six-point hours of learning daily. The schedule change will now offer a six-hour school day with four to five hours of synchronous learning scheduled throughout the day that includes movement breaks, lunch breaks, recess for the younger grades, handwashing breaks, transition, and cleaning time. Wednesdays will follow the current schedule with no more than three hours of synchronous learning for grades K to eight and no more than four hours for grades nine to 12. Synchronous learning on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays is as follows. Grades K to two is four hours daily. Grades three to eight is five hours daily. Grades nine to 12 is 4.5 to five hours daily. This change allows the district to increase synchronous live instructional time to meet the needs of students and following the updated DESI guidelines. It allows us to develop busing schedules to safely transport students to and from school and maintain all safety protocols and appropriate distancing. Many variables go into planning the structured learning day, remote or hybrid, with the goal of creating the best educational experience for our students despite the challenges the pandemic presents. We ask the district to continually strive to create more meaningful and engaging learning opportunities throughout the school day. It is not our expectation that any child is sitting in front of the screen for six hours, but rather, students have ongoing engagement in structured learning throughout the day with the goal of improving the learning experience for all students. As part of our planning, we continue to look at our COVID data. Holyoke's designation is red. As of December 31st, the case count for the prior 14 days is 376 cases. The average daily incidence rate is 66.1, and the percent positivity is 7.38. A monthly summary of the HPS Student and Staff Case Counts is provided on the following slide. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay. Liz or Sam is?
Yeah, I don't have the PowerPoint. I just sent Mike a message. Hopefully, we'll, sure, he was distracted with something. He'll be right back.
Okay. This might, I see Pete McAndrew. Mildred, maybe this is an opportunity for him to do public comment while we wait.
So we'll have Mr. Pete McAndrew from the Holyoke Teachers Association. He's the president of the Holyoke Teachers Association to go ahead and provide his public comment for this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for extending the, the public comment for my, I thought I had this Zoom life down. I really did. I thought I had it under control, and, and then it slipped away from me from it there tonight. So thank you for extending the, the public comment, and thank you, Dr. Alberto Vazquez Matos, for being so gracious. I appreciate it. I am here tonight on behalf of the Holyoke Teachers as the president of the Holyoke Teachers Association to express our concerns regarding the anticipated return to in-person instruction potentially too soon. First of all, I would really like to thank Mayor Morrison, School Committee members, for your immediate response to the concerns of the Holyoke Teachers, and we look forward to your continued support. At, at no time do I wish to diminish the, the hard work and thoughtfulness of community stakeholders in preparation for return to in-person instruction. Teachers agree that in-person instruction benefits children both academically and socially. We, we are concerned, however, about the high rates of COVID-19 transmission in Holyoke and the, the potential negative impact on students, family, and staff. So let me, let me do my best to, to explain our concerns. Things have kind of changed. This is a very fluid situation, and things change on, on the daily and on the week, so. What, what precipitated this request for public comment tonight was the district's announcement of return, of the return of teachers and staff to buildings to be followed by the gradual return of students. Since our request to speak, to address the school committee, those dates have been further, further pushed back out of an abundance of caution as COVID-19 rates increase across the city. What, what has happened is the district has granted, just to bring everybody up to date, the district has granted many requests for teachers to remain home and teach remotely. Of those groups, there are teachers with medical documentation, teachers that might be more susceptible to complications surrounding COVID-19. The second group of teachers would be teachers with extenuating circumstances. Perhaps they have a member in their household that, that may be compromised. So it may be, be dangerous to those folks. And then the third group are teachers that have young children and are concerned about safe and appropriate daycare. If these anticipated dates are met with COVID rates being so high. But I, I will say that everybody has been so thoughtful in this process around protecting, protecting, I think, not only students and families and staff, but I, I know we all have the community at large in our best interest. I just want to say this, the, the stress of job security for teachers that are, that will be potentially forced to decide whether or not to go back to work or, or care for somebody in their household or their own personal health, it's, it's creating a tremendous amount of anxiety. Pretty comparable to the anxiety back in, in September when we came and addressed the school committee, or August when we addressed the school committee. For each of these groups that I, the aforementioned- For each of these groups, the aforementioned groups, our students and the community at large, we just feel it's too risky with COVID transmission rates being so high in the city. At this point, unfortunately, and I mean this sincerely, COVID-19 has impacted so many of us. It really has. It has impacted so many of us. I mean, to the point where, I mean, we need to take a moment, and we really need to think. And our thoughts and prayers go out to all those folks that we know and families that have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. I think we're optimistic, right? There's hope. We feel like there's hope. And the finish line is really in sight right now. It feels that way. It feels like we can see the finish line. And I don't think at this point we should take any unnecessary risk and make it look like Hoyoke failed, right, to protect a vulnerable population of students, a vulnerable population of families, and the staff members that ultimately will be asked to return to work, you know. So there are a group of teachers who are in the buildings right now, and they're working. I think what really we'd like to see all of us is a gradual reintroduction of not only students but staff to meet the needs of those students who we know need our support. And like I said before, we appreciate it. We've always felt as an organization, as an association, that we've had the support of the school committee, the city council, the mayor. And we appreciate that. And we want to move together in partnership to do what's right for the community at large. So thanks so much for your time. And like I said, I apologize for my... I don't know. Can you believe you're trusting your students with me online? And so, right, so I'm almost like making a bigger statement for the need to come back to work for students. But so thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. Thanks so much. I'll be around if anybody has any questions for me. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if that's allowed in public comment, because I missed the protocols.
I thank you, Mr. McAndrew, for coming on. Yeah, it's kind of weird also when we log in. It's we're in the webinar portion, so it is a bit confusing. But thank you for coming in and providing your comment and for representing your teachers. Thank you.
So this is where I left off with the monthly summary of case counts. As you can see, by November 4, and the number of daily cases have increased in the month of December, as you can see. And so, which guides many of the conversations of our plannings and moving forward. Keep in mind that, you know, the colored guide that's provided by the State Department in collaboration with the state Health Department. Just because a city is in the red does not mean that the school district would have to completely go remote. It allows for hybrid or remote. So I just want to kind of remind the school committee and my colleagues around also that guidance that is provided to us. Next slide, please. And so this slide is pretty telling and powerful when you look at it. Since the school year began on 9/14, HPS has had 224 cumulative positive cases through December 31. In December, this consisted of 98 students, 92 remote, and six in-person learners, and 25 staff, two remote, and 23 in-person. Total counts by month include September 14 to the 30th, three cases, October 24 cases, November 74 cases, and December 123 cases. Cumulative cases through Thursday, January 7 are 265. From the 1st to the 7th of January, there have been 35 remote students, one in-person student, and five in-person staff. But I want to take a moment also to pause here, because there's also an opportunity to celebrate and thank all of our staff who have been working with in-person students. We have been educating 800 students in person since September. And as you can see in the light blue, that is the least group of students who we see COVID cases, which is the opposite of what we're seeing of students in remote. And you can see the dark blue, the jump month to month. So I do want to take this opportunity to thank and applaud our teachers, our nursing staff, our administration, our facilities team, and all those involved in making that work, because that means our plan was pretty solid of making sure that we have all the safety protocols, resources, and equipment for our students who participated in person learning in some form or the other since September. And so, health services updates. So nurses participate in a five-hour professional development training for COVID-19 preventative transmission in schools. School nurses, planning and perspective. Our nurses are receiving trainings to administer the Bionex Now Rapid COVID test, and will be able to offer testing to symptomatic staff and students in the very near future. We're going to have an upcoming Mental Health First aid training on the 27th, preparation for nurses to support and address mental health issues for staff and students, teaching and implementing guidance in appropriate protocols and procedures regarding COVID-19 in the schools, and personal calls to families district-wide to discuss the state's flu shot expectations. We've also, last week, end of last week, we also submitted our interest in being one of the districts to participate as well in the pool COVID testing as well, surveillance testing, which hopefully we will be able to have available for students and staff district-wide. And so I will stop there and ask, address any questions or my team to join me in addressing any questions or clarifying questions that you might have or feedback or comments.
Okay, so that opens up. Is there any comment or questions? I'm looking to see if there's any hands raised. And I have Ms. Brunel.
Sorry, I had the children in the background before I could unmute myself. Oh, I just wanted to first thank Pete McAndrews for jumping on and giving us a little bit of the mindset of where the teachers are coming from regarding back to school. And, you know, of course, thank Dr. Vasquez Matos and his team for all the work they put into, you know, just making sure our students are taken care of on a daily basis. I had a couple of quick questions and concerns. I know the Board of Health is with us this evening. So that's good, because I do have a question for them. I'm going to go backwards, if you don't mind, in my questions. So my first concern with the new policy isn't so much of the duration of the time that the students will be on learning time now with the new schedule, but the cameras on policy, I really struggle with. Not just as a school committee member, but as a parent in Hoyoke, I've heard some of the conversations between my own children and their classmates. And, you know, we have a very significant disparity in wealth and what people have and don't have in this community and, you know, what their living accommodations may be. I mean, we don't know. Some of our students may very well be attending class in the vehicle or, you know, hiding in a bathroom from God knows what. So, you know, it really, I think we need to be a little bit more empathetic and sympathetic. And I don't think that people should have to reach out and ask for an exemption. The students have already been told that this is going to be a requirement. So now they're going to notice if someone's camera's not on. So then they're going to notice that someone needed to get some special excuse to not have their camera on. So I just would like us to be a little bit more considerate when considering that being a requirement and possibly factoring into their participation, grades, and scores, and how we determine that day. So I just want to put that out there as a concern. Another concern of mine with the new hours is, as Pete McAndrew started to mention a little bit, is teachers. And I don't feel as though teachers should be required to teach from the building if the students are not in the building. I understand there are certain cohorts where students are in the building. We've given many exemptions. And I certainly, you know, with the current situation, obviously, once we're in school, then the staff needs to be in school. But up until that point, I really don't see it necessary to force our teachers back into the building. So I hope that we are delaying that, now that we are delaying the start of virtual, sorry, hybrid learning. You know, to that point, I saw Hoyoke Public Schools post on their social media sites and their other sites that they're looking for lots of substitute and guest teachers. And, you know, we've had so many cases within the city. Granted, not within the buildings, but we only have such a small portion of our students in the buildings now. So I know I don't want to see my student have a substitute teacher for three weeks because, you know, Ms. A is quarantining because student C brought, you know, had COVID or the nurse or whomever it is. So I just want to see us have really detailed plans for that. Like, you know, can the teacher teach from home if they're quarantining? Or, you know, if there's a substitute? Because let's say Ms. B decides to take a leave of absence, right? Because she can't possibly accommodate coming back to school. Suddenly, my student has a substitute. Who's doing the lessons plans? Who's correcting grade work? Who's doing all of that? So we need to, like, you know, make sure that all of that is worked out. And then, you know, I guess this will be my question for the Board of Health. That, you know, I saw the city's plan for vaccinations. And if it's so important to get teachers back into the building, then our teachers need to be in Phase 1 for vaccinations. No ifs, ands, or buts about it, no excuses. We have been remote since almost a full year now. We can all survive another month, two months, three months, if necessary, and stay remote for the full entire 2020, 2021 calendar year until our teachers get vaccinated. I just don't see why we would put them into a position to risk not only themselves, but our students, their families, and everyone else if the vaccine is already here? So as a city, as a state, we need to do what's necessary so that our teachers can be in Phase 1 of the vaccination plan. So thanks for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. So I don't know, Sean, Mr. Gonsalves, Ms. Brunel had a question in respects of the city's plans for vaccination. If you're able to answer to that one, do you have an answer? Do you not?
Yeah, I guess my answer is the city does not... We did not create the vaccination timeline. That's a state-mandated vaccine timeline. And so I understand your concern about having teachers in Phase 1. Someone much higher up the epidemiology food chain than myself set that timeline, and we do not have the choice to move groups in and out of those phases. So I do definitely understand your point of view, and I can see why teachers being in Phase 1 would certainly make the transition into in-person learning a little bit more timely. But that is not a decision I'm able to augment in any way.
Yeah, and I want to add to that. And I appreciate, Ms. Brunel, your comments, because, you know, they are parting a plan. We need a subpool, because teachers do get sick. Are we considering what does that look like? But, you know, like we've mentioned every, you know, since the beginning, this is a fluid process, like every week is a new week. I mean, that's the reality that we're all living in. And so what we do know is that vaccines will be available to educators starting the month of February all the way into April. What does that rollout look like? It's still being kind of, you know, ironed out at the state level, and then the appropriate departments will be communicated. However, it's important also to, and we talk about this in our weekly meetings, it's also important for the school committee to understand that we cannot mandate the vaccine for adults. So just because it's available to teachers and first responders and medical staff does not mean that it's mandated for them to actually get the vaccine in order to be in our schools, which is something that also is being talked about at the table, which adds complexity. And you're probably all reading it in a newspaper. Some of, many in the health field or work in nursing homes have refused to take the vaccine. So that's something we're also going to have to address moving forward. My goal is actually, as you heard in my comments, is to provide as many opportunities to administer testing, whether it's the rapid testing or now hopefully we'll get the surveillance testing in our schools so that we get, our students or staff have access to testing as quickly as possible in our schools as we approach. As it relates to the staggered approach, that is still what we are trying to implement, which includes, we're also talking about including also staff. Staff has been notified by our Chief of HR that all of the accommodations that were requested still stand until we get to the dates for in-person learning for our students. So those accommodations still stand until we actually talk about dates. But a staggered approach for employees is also being considered as we speak. And hopefully by the end of this week, we will have more details for that.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez Matos. I did see Mr. Gonsalves hand up. I don't know if it was because you wanted to comment back on the question that was being asked or something that Dr. Vasquez had mentioned.
Yeah, I just want to sort of add on to that a little bit. I think one of the important things to look at is the last slide where we showed some of the case counts involving HPS families and HPS staff. And I think one of the things to look at here is we meet every week, and we have sort of a larger level sort of strategy meeting, discussion of numbers, things that are coming up, changes that we're looking to make adaptations. But during that time and also throughout the week, the school nurses are in constant communication with the Board of Health Nurse Debbie Shire. And then they, Cynthia Carboni and Debbie Shire, communicate regularly with the Contact Tracing Collaborative, which is the state's contact tracing... Well, I guess they're a collaborative. They're a group, and they handle a lot of the contact tracing for the state. And they pick up a lot of the overlap that cities and towns can't always account for. So all three kind of involved parties in the outreach are there. And what we're not seeing is, we're not seeing the classrooms. And I agree that this information is based off of the proportion of students that are in the classroom, and that's certainly a relevant piece of context. But we are not seeing classrooms as a transmission vector. So when you look at that chart and you see, you know, six children in-person learning, and you see, you know, 23 staff, or you see, you know, the very high number of remote cases, I think it's important to think about it that those are not cases that are, quote unquote, you know, caused by in-person learning. They're strictly an accounting of cases for people that are involved in the HPS program. So those are not recorded in-person transmissions. That's not a statement that six kids got COVID due to their involvement with the school. Merely that six children who attend in person happen to have COVID. And as I'm sure many of you are aware, it's very difficult to ascertain the point of transmission because of the way COVID is transmitted, because it's a respiratory illness, because the onset of symptoms takes a long time. But what we really are seeing is that, really, two things. Remote learners are having a much more difficult time with transmission rates. And also, our primary cluster category, if you look at the weekly reports released by the state, are households. So no other cluster setting, and the settings are, you know, say, you know, different industries, different roles. So early education is one, K through 12 is one. You know, the food industry is one. They go all the way down. There's, you know, a couple dozen categories. None of them, for this last reporting period, were over, you know, 100 cases. But if you look at this most recent weekly report, household transmissions are about 19,000. So no other category is over 100. Household transmissions are 19,000. And so it may be that some households aren't always providing the most COVID-protected environments either. And we do believe that some of the protocols and routines and safety strategies, behaviors that are being learned in school may be having a ripple effect, and they may be returning outwards into homes and into the community. So I do think that some in-person learning can actually spread COVID safety and reduce transmission rates, because you're reinforcing positive behaviors. You're teaching people activities. activities and, and giving them opportunities to learn that they may not have if they're spending the majority of their time in a home where they may not be exposed to some of these behaviors. So these are things that we think about when we're considering increasing in-person learning and some of the, the, as I said, possible limiting factors that, that that setting can have on COVID.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Goncalves. The next person I have is Mr. Shan.
Yeah, so, I mean, I appreciate that from the, the Board of Health, but I, I think it's also difficult too, since populations are so reduced in schools to be able to kind of pinpoint that, that, I mean, of course there'd be lower and not as much transmission because schools are not open fully with that. It's just been trending differently in, in some places when you look at numbers. But what I will, it's just with return to school and back to some sort of transition back. I've been told that there's a possibility that Dean may be used as an isolation recovery site. That the state may be doing that with, with the gym there. Is that, is that true? And is, is that, that gym may be used for individuals that are COVID positive for a shelter at all or anything?
No. What, what is being looked at and, 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 and planned for is an emergency temporary shelter for COVID impacted individuals. So those who probably are going, are evicted from home and things like that. So it's, it's, it's a temporary situation where there is a criteria to participate such as safety background screenings, COVID testing. So individuals who are test positive will be sent to an alternative, alternative, alternate placement as well as case management. There will be case managers to assist individuals to find them permanent homes, understanding that they have been displaced because they've been impacted by COVID in some way or form. This, it's, it's minimum, so it's, it's a capacity of only 40, 40 beds. And that does not mean it's at 100% capacity. It can be 10 individuals, it can be five individuals, it can depend on, on the week. And it is, it is short term, so it is not something that's going to be there for the rest of the year. It finishes in late March, early, which in our timeline, which is where, where most of the students will come back to a hybrid model at that site. And so, which, and there's more details as such as, you know, you know, 24-hour security, retrofitting and making sure that there is no access or interaction between if, if there were students in the building with the adults and so forth, as well as staffing. All of this is provided through the state and, and, and managed by the city. It is well, so far what I've seen, it is well thought out and making sure that it services the communities, but it does not create any safety concerns, any safety issues for, for students who are there and so forth. So I have, we are, we are working on a commute, a strategic communication to, to, to up, update the community as well as the school committee. And so we are still in, in the, in that planning phase to bring that forward.
But there's currently students at Dean and STEM in, in-person instruction, correct?
That's correct, but they will be in a different, we will be creating kind of a, a divider that will be built that will not allow access or, or movement or interaction between whoever is at the, the emergency shelter or at this campus. And it will be actually, one of the requests that we talked, actually talked about today is actually an additional guard to be at that, at that location.
I mean, this, whereas I understand people getting displaced, I, I mean, I, I will say that Hoyoke and has received promises in the past from the state that things are temporary, that, that things only happen for a short period of time and that doesn't always kind of come through. I mean, I, I have real concerns that we would be using a site that currently has students in it. And why wouldn't there have been a location? I mean, we have other schools that don't have students in them or could be moved that, that could be, I, I'm just, I'm very challenged by this. I mean, 40 is not a, 40 beds is not a small amount. And it's, it's really challenging that we would be using one of our educational settings for this. I, I understand the need and I'm, I'm compassionate and empathetic towards the need on that. I mean, it, it seems like from your comments that you are very supportive of the plan and, and very supportive of this. But I, I just don't, I mean, I am nowhere near someone that's comfortable with this as of yet. I mean, it, you can put lots of security protocols in place, but it just, I mean, we require a, a parent, if they want to volunteer to have a quarry to build in our buildings. Are people going to be quarried that are in our buildings? It just, it's very concerning about this at all. And I guess I would also be interested to know what the definition of temporary is. Because we fought for many years and people were displaced in temporary housing and hotels and that temporary housing was not nearly temporary. I, I just, I feel like we're being set up by the state on this and it's not a, I, I do not think this is a wise idea, but I also don't have all of the information or how it even came about that Dean would be the selected site when there's definitely other or, or maybe other viable options. I just, a place with active students in it, actively learning and engaging just does not seem appropriate, even though the building is, it's still connected over there. And it, it also means that, I, I mean, to not have full use, I don't know, there's just a lot of issues. I, I mean, I have issues with, with the HVAC system still too. And if this is, was considered, I, I mean, there's, there's a whole lot with it. To have students in a building that we would be using for transitional housing seems very challenging. I mean, I know that places did it in the spring, but they weren't occupied. I know that some colleges are doing it, but they're isolated in housing that is not student occupied. We have, we have sixth grade to 12th grade in that building. I have grave concerns with that decision.
I'm sorry, really quick, what, what was that called? This kind of caught me off guard. You called it a temporary emergency COVID-19 shelter?
Emergency, emergency shelter for those individuals who have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, such as individuals who have been displaced, evicted and, and need emergency housing and placement. So this is kind of a, you know, a transitional place where individuals, one of the, and, and so keep in mind that one of the things that we've also been dialoguing and this, this is, is, is how can we actually make sure that we also prioritize some of our families that are going to be displaced in, for, for this opportunity as well? Because it's not something that just, you know, to your point, Mr. Shanann. This is not, this is not a conversation that just rapidly happened. I can tell you there's some community leaders who have been asking me and I'm pretty sure have been asking the mayor since I've came on board, how we're going to plan for the possible, you know, possible evictions and moratorium, and the lift of the moratorium for families that are going to be displaced. And knowing that the school district has, you know, a significant number of homeless of, of families. You know, what is, what is the, the, the right thing to do to support our families and also the community, knowing that, you know, we are a public school system that are, that's part of the greater ecosystem. And so, you know, and looking at the details, you know, and, and knowing that the dean and steam campus is not even close to 40% capacity. It allows an opportunity of how we can support, you know, initiatives like this in partnership with the city and, and, and the state. Now, I can tell you that, you know, they've been very good, they've been very attentive to understanding the operation of the school and at no time had they indicated that they might be a chance that they go beyond the date of, of the program to cease moving forward.
So it doesn't mean that they're COVID positive, it just, it means impacted by some form. So if it's through eviction.
Correct.
I can't think of anything else unless we're talking about a fire, but that's not related to COVID.
Or they've been, or they've been moved, you know, because of COVID, they had to, you know, lost their job, right? And so they had to. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors into it. One of the criteria to, to be participant is that they have to test negative for COVID. Again, you know, part of our agreement is that they, there is a facility somewhere else, I don't know where, that will house individuals who are tested, who test positive for COVID.
Okay. So I know Ms. Burks had her hand up, but as soon as Devin started asking questions in respects to this, I saw Mayor Morse's hand go up and being that I guess you guys were the ones, I'm going to assume that have been talking about this because I know for a fact I didn't know. So apparently the school committee wasn't aware about what was being talked about. Mayor Morse, would you like to reflect more on, on this?
Yeah, not necessarily, but, but offer a little bit more information and had the opportunity to provide an update to the City Council Public Safety Committee last week and expected that this would be part of the conversation tonight. And Sean from the Board of Health can, can speak to some of the more particulars about it. His department's been working directly with MEMA and the Department of Housing and Community Development on this. And so we've seen an uptick in homelessness across the state, including here in Western Mass. As you know, Hoyoke does not have a, a permanent shelter. And so the plan is to have a temporary homeless shelter between now and the end of March. And then long-term planning with the Friends of the Homeless and other agencies to do a more permanent shelter elsewhere in the city. And so we actually provided three sites to MEMA and the Department of Housing and Community Development. They came out, evaluated the War Memorial, Dean, another site, and they came back and said the Dean was the best possible site, given that it separated from that the gymnasium is actually separate from the classroom areas that they would make the investment in the floor. There's an MOU between the, the district and the, the city and the, and the state about dates. And so there's no risk or expectation that this would go beyond the dates in the MOU. They frankly can't in that respect. And, and this is for the winter in particular, given the, given the freezing temperatures and making sure that there is a, a warm place for people to sleep. And so I am 100% behind the idea. The state has stepped up to provide funds to, to make this happen. I think it's a, a good location and they've addressed every single concern that both folks in our Board of Health and also folks at HPS have, have raised. And in my opinion, have given adequate answers to that. So I think, you know, as Dr. V said, this could be something that is well utilized up to 40 beds. It could be something that, that, that isn't. And obviously we want to prioritize those families and children that have become homeless, that are part of our Hoyoke Public School System and, and family. And so these are popping up and opening up throughout the state, specific in response to an increase in uptick in homelessness as it relates to COVID and the financial implications. And, and, and so Hoyoke, obviously they've identified a need and we're doing our part to, to meet that need.
Thank you very much. I'm talking to myself, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Next, I have Ms. Burks.
Good evening. So Devin, I'm thankful that you brought this up. I found out about this earlier today, have done some reach out and I'm very concerned to say the least. I think it's great that the city is stepping up. I do not feel a school is an appropriate placement at all. I'm very concerned about the students and the staff that are in Dean's building and their safety. Even with an additional guard, I, I don't feel like students in a school should have a homeless shelter attached to their school, like. And not only that, but if we're bringing students into that homeless shelter, you know, what about their peers seeing them? Like that's in knowing that they're in the shelter, like, can you imagine what that's going to do to them as well? So I'm worried about really kids going in there as well. I don't feel this is appropriate at all. You know, I'm going to be very clear on that. I, I, I really would rather that they try to find an alternate location. You know, this should not be happening in a school building where we have students current. But I, I love that, that the city is stepping up to, to try to help. I just don't feel this is appropriate at all. Going back to the presentation, I just wanted to make that, you know, put that on the record and make it very clear that I don't think this is safe or wise or, or right thing to do. Going back to the presentation, I'd like to know how many Bionex Now Rapid Tests will be allowed, allotted to each school? Will all schools have them is one of my questions. And then looking at the, the, the COVID transmissions and also listening to Mr. McAndrew this evening, you know, 35 in-person staff is a lot. You know, for catching COVID, I know our numbers for students was only 14, but the 35 for the in-person staff. You see that?
Rebecca, we can't hear you. There's something wrong with your sound and I don't think she can hear me.
We can't.
Mayor said that he looked at the War Memorial Dean and he said there was a third but didn't name. So I'm curious to know what that third site was. And in regards to COVID, Sean, I'm hoping you can answer this. So with contact tracing, if somebody has been, had COVID within the last 90 days, but is exposed again to a positive person, shouldn't they be contacted with contact tracing? And do you have any concerns with the strains from the UK and also from Africa currently that are both strains that are saying, you know, are in Massachusetts?
So to answer your question, I guess I'll answer the first part about the strains. Governor Baker has specifically mentioned recently the, the UK strain, I believe is the one that he referenced. But yes, there is evidence that there are like a mutation, a strain that we hadn't initially encountered that they've seen in the UK since I believe last fall. And while we're not necessarily seeing it en masse, it's something that, that may come. This is something that you kind of, you really won't know until you start seeing cases and until they're able to analyze the strain a little bit better. And I, I guess I am as concerned about that as I am currently concerned about what we're experiencing here. I, I don't think I'm additionally concerned. It, it is just one more layer to this. There, there is a discussion that it is more aggressively contagious. And, you know, that, that is something that we will be looking for. You know, I, I'm equally concerned about flu season coming in and people convincing themselves that they don't have COVID, that they just have the flu. Because I think that's much more likely to impact this region. The flu comes around every year and a lot of people just, oh, I just got a cough, I just, it must be the flu. And I'm, I'm much more concerned about that oncoming sort of muddying of the waters in the immediacy than, than a strain that we're not seeing in numbers. But if we do start to see more documented cases or there is a a, a presence of it that becomes established, you can look at distancing, you can look at occupancy numbers. And I, I do believe that the Department of Health and Desi would adjust COVID protocols to adapt to a more contagious strain coming in.
So going back to my previous question in regards to if someone was COVID positive, for instance, and then was exposed again, like shouldn't they be contact traced, correct? Or, I mean, I know there's the 90-day quote unquote immunity, but the truth of the matter is people are getting reinfected with COVID and you could also have a different strain. So I guess like, I, I want to make sure that I, I keep seeing we're doing the right things by way of contact tracing and putting information out there. But we need to be mindful that if somebody had COVID and they're under their 90-day immunity, if they have family members at home that haven't contracted COVID and they were directly exposed, they could be bringing it back home again. So, you know, I have some concerns there. And when we're saying that we're following all protocols, you know, there's some protocols that I'm questioning.
I, I would say that in our regular communications with epidemiology and with the Department of Public Health, that they, they're actually telling people that if you had COVID in the last ninety days, that you should not be retested. And that there is an almost zero likelihood that you would transmit the virus to anyone else. And while reinfection has been documented, it's incredibly rare. And the state continues to look at verified numbers of reinfection. Oftentimes cases that have been reported as reinfections are people whose body, for one reason or another, is sustaining viral material for an extended period of time. They're no longer contagious, but virus matter is still apparent in their body enough to trigger a test. And so that is why they've actually, they've said that if, if you've been positive within ninety days, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be retested because it's creating in many people a suspicion that they are positive again. And so you should be contacted anytime you are exposed. Contact tracing in Holyoke is done primarily through our office or the contact tracing collaborative. I will say that the weakness in contact tracing done by anyone is, you know, making the connection, right? So if we're provided a phone number for somebody who's not necessarily in the school system and we call them and that number that was reported to us is off by a digit, or their voicemail box is full, or their phone is shut off, or they're out of service and they don't get, they don't get the text message. I mean, CTC typically, when they call, it's a phone call, it's a text message and it's a voicemail. And in the voicemail, they leave a lengthy sort of rote voicemail that says, here's why we're calling, please call us back. They repeat the callback information multiple times. They try to send a text if they're not able to get ahold of you. So I would say that those contact tracing efforts are fairly robust. And they typically call anybody, even if you have been positive in the past. It's not always just about the exposure. It can be about if you were exposed, your description of an event that you might have been exposed at might include others that the person who described the event to them forgot to mention. So it's, it's not just the level of checking in with that one person. It's also gathering their details of, of possible exposure settings.
And do we know about the Bynax Now rapid test? How many schools, how many tests?
So, I mean, we, it's, it's for the district as a whole. First set came in since Ms. Carboni is on. So I'm going to ask her to kind of provide an update of where we're at and the deployment of these test kits throughout the district.
Hello. Yes. So regarding the Bynax Now test kits, we are sent out on sets of kits and they come in sets of ten. And so each school is set up with a set of ten kits. And the nurses are completing their training this week with regard to it because all the nurses have to be trained by a certified Bynax Now trainer. And then it must be demonstrated completely, including full dawning and doffing of the PPE as well. And so then we'll periodically reorder kits and then the state sends us kits as we need them. Like it's really like any other lab would do.
So I guess again, I just want to clarify the question. I want to know how many schools are going to have the tests and how many tests each school will have? So you're telling me that every school will have at least a box of ten?
Yes, yep, for starting, every school.
And are we going to be testing our bus drivers, our, like our custodians, our transportation team? Like, are we going to be testing them as well or no?
So all HPS staff and students are part of the Bynax program. And any of them who are symptomatic would be able to be tested, staff or students, yes.
So we're only testing symptomatic students? We're not testing anybody that's asymptomatic or could have potentially had like, let's say a kid comes in and says, hey, my mom and dad have COVID, you know, but I don't, because I'm not sick. Like are we, are we going to be testing that student even though they're asymptomatic?
So the student would be assessed by the nurse, fully assessed and reviewed their history of symptoms, what's going on, the family would be contacted as well for some history. And then a determination would be made what the next step would be. And that would really depend on the case.
And just to, just to kind of touch on that, Bynax Now kits, their initial emergency use agreement was for symptomatic individuals. They haven't currently been approved for use in asymptomatic exposures. Their, their issuance and, and the, the sort of permissions that have been issued for them to be used right now are specifically focused around people who are, are symptomatic. And so when they, they test these kits, they tested them on, and what, what that's called a validation. Those validations were done on symptomatic folks. The state is currently undergoing larger validations of these kits for asymptomatic individuals.
So really quick, Sean, I just need you to clarify this. I just heard that and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I really need a clarification on this. You're saying that it's only for emergency use for, for symptomatic? Is that only in respects to the school setting?
So Bynax Now kits were purchased by the state in a, a large amount. And they have been provided to schools in the district to use on symptomatic individuals. Prior to them being issued to schools, when they were being reviewed and approved by the federal government, their usage, like all medication, like all medical tests, like all medical equipment, has to be evaluated and it's provided parameters for use. And these Bynax Now kits are the emergency use agreement, which is issued by the government, the FDA, by, you know, the folks at CDC, that, that right now is for symptomatic individuals. And a larger use on asymptomatic individuals is being evaluated.
Right. For the agreement is between schools and the government?
The state.
Or the state, that's only, that's only where that agreement lies. Because Bynax Now is used for, for exposure and also for, how would I say, compliance testing? That's why I'm asking you, if it's only for the schools where that agreement is coming from. The agreement that it's only for symptomatic, so you can't use it. Say you find out a teacher was positive, right? You get a notification, right? Now that teacher's out, but she may have exposed students then, or another staff member. You would not test those students or that staff member because it's only for symptomatic. So technically what you're saying is those that were exposed would stay in the classroom because they're, they're, they're not symptomatic.
No, we will require them actually to go get a COVID test.
Yeah. So the program and, and the, the situation that, that we have with holding people out who are exposed is still in place. Before the Bynax Now tests ever entered the, the planning phase or whatever offered to the school, we've had in-person learning before Bynax Now was accessible, accessible to the schools. And when we have a possible exposure, when we hear about possible exposures during the day or, you know, by someone who finds out that they're positive in the middle of school day, there's a whole protocol about isolation and observation rooms and the nurses getting involved and contact tracing. And the Bynax Now is only to increase the robustness of that protocol and speed up the testing. So if you get a Bynax Now test in the school, those rapid tests are a first layer. You're still going to be expected to get tested with a traditional PCR after you are removed from the school. So this is a, an, an immediate response as part of a larger protocol we have in place. And then anybody who's there who's exposed, who's involved would then be instructed, now that you have been removed from the school setting, you should contact your primary care physician, you should get a test.
And keep in mind, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we're all, we also submitted the letter of interest to participate in the surveillance session, which is the molecular testing at all our sites. And they would do those random testing as an, also additional, you know, preventative measure, but also another data point for us as well. And the goal is, we start in February, if, if the data is in our favor, that that will also be in place as, as when students and, and teachers return.
I'm sorry about that, Ms. Burks. I just needed clarification on that, but go ahead.
Sean, I have one more question for you. So if you have, now, mind you, I've already done my homework. So I've already spoken to like epidemiologists at Boston Children's and I've done my homework and my research. So I'm not free of knowledge when it comes to this. So if you, for instance, because they are recommending, you were right, but they're saying eight weeks to retest once you've tested positive. So you have to wait up to eight weeks to retest. So if you have somebody who is, you know, three months out, who's still testing positive, are they still shedding the virus?
They're no longer contagious, but virus material that's non-viable, we'll say, can still exit your body. But you're no longer considered to be contagious. Now, if you're right, see, when you start to get to the numbers, if you're on week eight, you're on ninety days and then you're exposed, it's a temporary immunity. So is there a possibility that at some point in the future, you could become contagious again outside of this, this eight-week window? It is possible. During that eight-week window, you're only considered by the state to be contagious for ten days at a maximum right now. That's what they're asking people to isolate. After that, material that's not viable is still in your body. It could come out of your nose, it could come out of your lungs. It's not contagious. It's just like all the other, you know, it's gross to talk about, but it's just like all the other material that comes out of your lungs and your nose. You know, when you cough or sneeze, that may not be necessarily contagious. So that's, that is the, the information that's been provided to us by the DPH and the EPI.
I'm wondering if we could possibly look into further people that have like lowered immune system or, you know, some of our students who are disabled. For them, it's very different. And then what the doctors are saying is very different for information. They're saying that if they're still detectable with the PCR test after ninety days, that they could in fact still be shedding virus. So because they said, you know, it, it's such a high intensity test that they, there's a possibility that, that could be happening. So that's one of the things I'm worried about.
I would say whenever you have complications, you have someone who's medically fragile, they have pre-existing comorbidities, they have health complications. We always advise and the nurses advise, the primary care physician plays a, a critical role in this that's not always discussed. So we don't consort with primary care physicians in, I would say ninety-nine percent of cases. But in some cases, we work directly with their physician. Their physician will reach out to us or the parent will put us in touch with them and we talk about them. And those are handled on a case-by-case basis, but they are a very small proportion of what we typically deal with. The, many of the students and adults that we're dealing with are healthy or relatively healthy. And they're advised to abide by the standard protocol that's in place. But there are always exceptions and we try to handle those in as sensitive, you know, as sensitively and as, as paying attention to their individual needs as we can.
So last thing, Meljid, I promise I'll shut up. You know, for me personally, I'm glad we're pushing back the start. I think that the numbers right now propose some, some real rate risks. And I know it's important to get these kids back, but it's more important that we do so safely. And I feel the same way for our staff, like seeing the numbers that were presented tonight. I mean, I know we don't have a ton of people back and those numbers seem really hide me. Thirty-five in-person staff kind of seems like a big number, so I get where their concerns are coming from and I respect it. But I also understand families' concerns in regards to, you know, kids need to go back to school as well. We're walking a fine line. I don't think there's a right answer. I just, I, I want us to do it safely for everybody involved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burks. Um, next, I did see Mr. Krishan's hand go up previously.
Hi, thanks. I'm, I'm very concerned about using Dean as a shelter. I think that it raises a, a lot of, a lot of security, safety issues. And I, I would really hope that another site could be viewed. It's, it's, I, I'm really concerned that, that it might not even be local people that we would be having come to Dean. I don't know how they could possibly be completely vetted to the extent that we would want them to be. There's all kinds of housing laws that we're, you know, walking into. And my personal experience with the housing court locally is that they are not allowing evictions to take place until just about every means available are exhausted with regard to aid from, from a, a, a very large number of sources. And so I'm really concerned that this is, you know, and, and it's, you know, something that, that, that I, I truly worry about is just, you know, a, a, a door or a crack in, opening and another, another program that's going to be put onto the city of Holyoke that begins as a temporary program that turns into a permanent program. And I really think that our leaders need to think about this clearly. I think that Holyoke has always been a very generous city when it comes to housing and programming. And I am very concerned that this is another program that will not end up being temporary, even if the location is temporary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krishan. Next, I had Mr. Willahan.
I'm next.
No, I know, Ms. Tensley-Williams, I was going to Mr. Willahan, that I'm going to, to ask you and Mr. Callamore. I haven't forgotten you guys. I got you. All right.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I kind of had the same concerns as Mr. Krishan and Mr., Mr. Sheen. I really don't think in the end that the shelter will be just for Holyoke, Holyoke families. I, I just have my concerns about that. I have concerns about the costs going forward. I know the mayor said that the state's going to give us some money, you know, IOU, I guess. I just have the cost that for the cleaning, staffing, security issues, utilities. We're going to be heating it, heating it twenty-four hours a day right now. So those are my, those are my concerns. And if the state's promising us money in the end, I would kind of hold on to that. If the state's looking for, for like better solutions for, for housing and for rooms, the hotel at the, at the casino in Springfield is vacant right now. So I think they should probably take a look at the hotel over in Springfield. Probably that might be a better solution that are the school system here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willahan. Now, Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Thank you for this opportunity. I totally agree with my colleagues as far as Dean is concerned. For years, Dean has been given a bad rap about what kind of school Dean was. And I'm beginning to see that people are beginning to respect our school again. And I really believe they need to find another site and not Dean. I think it would break my heart if this bad name comes back again on Dean and I'd. bad name comes back again on Dean. And I, I agree with the colleagues that we need to find another site and not Dean. Okay? Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley Williams. Mr. Colomore. Do you have any comment or question? Star six.
I hope I was right with star six. I think that's what I heard.
You were right, Mildred. Star six, Mr. Colomore. If you want to talk, now's your chance.
Yes.
Did, did you want to share anything, Mr. Colomore, regarding what we can talk?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you're, you're on, you're on.
Yes, about the Dean School, uh, have any of the school committee been discussing this at all? Or is it some other committee, uh, discussing not only the Dean School, but locations in the city? I, I'm very concerned that a real conversation wasn't held properly to, uh, make a decision about the Dean School.
So, Mr. Colomore, I just want to say that I was not aware about this. I think the, the majority of us were not aware of, of this being done, so we're just finding out now. So that's why we're asking so many questions, kind of a clarification point. Because no, this is not something where the school committee was involved in it. No one on the school committee was involved in it. So I don't know if you have more of a question or a comment? So I'd pass it back to you.
Yes, I, I have a question. Has anyone looked into feasibility of the geographic authority? Is that sold yet, or is that still the property of the city?
So that's still the property of the city, but it's under agreement with Bay State Health, who's in the process of, of purchasing it. So the state first evaluated Hoyoke Community College, and the area that a temporary shelter would have been used is under construction. The state also looked at the Warm Memorial on Appleton Street. They looked at the Senior Center in the city, and they looked at Dean Vocational. At the end of the day, given all of the, the availability of more space, the availability of, of showers, there's no interchange of money. There's no city billing the state. The state is paying for everything directly. So the installation of a temporary floor over the gym floor, they're paying directly for the staff, 24/7 staff, 24/7 security, so on and so forth. And so they're, they're paying for all those expenses. And we are actually, are hoping for a more permanent shelter in the city. And so I don't, I certainly don't see it as a problem if, if this is more long-term, even if the location changes, which it will. Obviously, there's no feasibility in keeping a, a shelter at a, at a school at the same time we're opening a school. And so the, the state understands that. This is a state agency that works alongside the Department of Early and Secondary Education. This will be short-term, ending late March or early April. We're spelling out the, uh, the dates in the, in the MOU, the particulars. But this is short-term for the winter, freezing temperatures, people that are homeless. We may find that it's, uh, it's fully utilized. We find that it's not utilized at all, given as Niles mentioned, that there has been a number of other state laws and, and policies put in place to prevent foreclosures and evictions. But I will say, Hoyoke does not have a homeless shelter. Yes, we have congregate shelters and already existing apartment buildings run by outside agencies. But unlike Springfield and North Hampton and other communities, oftentimes Hoyoke residents do go to emergency shelters in other cities, because Hoyoke does not have an emergency shelter. And so it's important that we have a short-term emergency shelter, given the extenuating circumstances of a global pandemic and how it's manifesting here in Western Mass. But more importantly, the long-term planning we're engaging in. So there has been a number of sites evaluated, and MEMA came back and, and talked about their pros and cons of each. And once I get my hands on that document, I'm happy to pass it on to the school committee.
If I could just add on quickly at the end, DHCD oversees congregate housing. And if you look at the phase schedule that I had sent out or that the state had put up, congregate housing is actually the last step in the Phase One. It's one of the last bullet points in Phase One. And so residents and staff at congregate housing will be vaccinated. And the state does have a vaccination plan in place for these congregate settings. And so folks there, as, as Dr. V had said, will have to be tested before they can come in. And then when they become residents, they'll be eligible to be vaccinated while they're there. So there's multiple levels of, you know, on top of the protocols they have in place, there's also vaccinations that will be forthcoming for those residents.
Yes, I'm very concerned over health issues, bathroom facilities at these locations. Is the federal government or the state going to come in and provide proper bathroom and shower facilities for?
The answer to that is yes. What they're looking at when we're reviewing these plans is an external, they're called a Conex, and they're a metal, sort of a box. And those are built out to have plumbing, bathroom facilities, laundry facilities. And so this is not something that is, is new. The state has some experience with this. And so they work with the building commissioner, the plumbing commissioner, the electrical inspectors, myself at the Board of Health with the fire department. And there are a multitude of inspections to make sure that this complies with all of the codes. So it, it is a temporary structure. It doesn't have to be the same as, say, a house or an apartment, but the adequacy of the number of bathroom facilities, of laundry facilities, hot water, you know, cle- easily cleanable surfaces, as the mayor mentioned, they're putting in flooring that is, you know, flame retardant. So, you know, all of the, the, you know, Ts are being crossed and Is are being dotted when we think about sanitation, you know, even as far as putting ashtrays outside for people who smoke in an area that, you know, isn't, you know, as safe. So there's not, you know, brush around it. It goes down to just even small things. They're, they're, all the food service is going to be handled onsite. There won't be any food service in between the buildings. That's one less access point. All the laundry will be handled onsite. Suez and the plumbing inspector are making sure that those hookups and that wastewater is being disposed of correctly. And so there's a lot of planning here, but the state has set up several of these facilities already. And so many of the issues that would arise and that people are concerned about are already sort of top of mind and, and being addressed.
Well, I have a big problem with, you mentioned that different, uh, parts of the city have been contacted, like the fire department, the police department, and, uh, but the, the school committee hasn't been involved in this at all. I'm just wondering why the federal or the state is avoiding us.
I don't think it's the state avoiding us. I think this is a state initiative in the middle of, of a pandemic, addressing the needs of the state and, and, and the context of sometimes the urban city. So this is a, a unique circumstances that we are, that I think the country and the state is living in. And I think, just like in other cities, that these are being kind of retrofitted out to service the needs. This is something that is led in collaboration with the State Emergency Agency and, and, and local city municipalities in order to address the needs of this global pandemic for our, our most marginalized and vulnerable populations.
If this is the case, then why isn't someone talking to the school committee about this in a school?
So it, it's, 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 you know, I, 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 I think we're providing an update. I mean, this is a conversation, but, you know, that falls under kind of, I mean, the operations of, of the school and also working with the city's municipalities of how we best service our community. So this will just be coming forthcoming as an update as we finalize the details. But, you know, it is one of the functions of, you know, the responsibility of, you know, umbrella of the receivership of the day-to-day operation. So, you know, while, while the city and the mayor leads kind of the organization, it's a matter of coordination and seeing how we can partner as one city, knowing that the public school serves the city and their students, and making sure that this is a coordinated effort to service our community and our parents and our families as well.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colomore. Next is Ms. Brunel.
I have to keep taking some deep breaths because I'm very upset right now. This is not an update in a conversation because this was not in our agenda. If Mr. Sheen didn't bring this up, we would not have been made aware. Just because Hoyoke is under receivership does not mean that the school committee should not have been made aware of this. Never would this have gone past the school committee's agenda if we were not in receivership. I fully support the city of Hoyoke getting a homeless shelter. That's not what this is about. You're talking about putting a homeless shelter in a building where there's schoolchildren. One of the few buildings in the city that is currently housing schoolchildren. And to listen to the gentleman from the Board of Health speak, and the mayor, and the receiver, it sounds like the planning on this did not start last week. It sounds like the planning for this has been in the works for I don't know how long. And again, this is not a conversation that came up because this was on the agenda. Therefore, the school committee was just completely disregarded for in the makings of this decision. And I can say that I don't appreciate that. Receivership or not, this is a building that's housing Hoyoke schoolchildren. And this committee was elected by the people of Hoyoke to represent the voices of those schoolchildren. And there's no guarantee that it's going to be Hoyoke families housed in this facility. And to some of the other members' point of attention, where hotels and other situations in the city of Hoyoke have been used for temporary housing, it is extremely hard to close something once you open it. And this sounds like a Pandora's Box to me. Cigarette containers, ashtrays on school grounds to collect cigarettes? You can't smoke on school grounds, right? Can't smoke on school grounds. So we're going to put ashtrays. Are we going to put trash receptacles? Are we going to put needle containers? Who's going into this housing? Who's going in? Okay? This can go at the geriatric authority, kudos to Mr. Colomore, because I was going to recommend that myself. How long is the extended contract with Bay State? I sell real estate for a living. I would love to review it. There might be a contingency plan in that for a, a pandemic, a global emergency, that has separate rooms, plenty of bathrooms, plenty of showers. It's an isolated facility that could handle this. And on a more long-term basis. But no, Bay State wants to make it a pay-for-bed service for medical, uh, mental health needs. So I'm going to retire because, again, you know, we're in receivership, so the school committee has really no authority to even like, you know, make decisions on this. But I think it's terrible that this is the way we found out, and I thank Mr. Sheen for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Now I have Mr. Sheen.
So I do have a comment just to make. I forgot to make it before. Back to the presentation that was going on, I, I do have to agree with Mrs. Brunel and the comments regarding the, the camera-on requirement for students. I just, I mean, I think about it now sometimes, when there's three people in my house sometimes on video. I have fairly good internet, and I get the waviness where I can communicate much better if I have my audio, my video off, audio on. So I just, I mean, I think it's, it's a struggle, especially with multiple people in a home trying to use the internet. Like, I understand why we want it. Maybe there could be a check-in or something like that, but just like all the time, it seems a little, it, it just, I understand why it's happening. Like, it's easier to teach with, with students there, but I, I also get that there's extenuating circumstances, and you could have three, four, or five people on a Zoom at one time, and it, it just obliterates your, your homeability with that. And I know you'll probably, you're shaking your head, like, I get it, that that is going to be looked into.
Yeah, I, I, so I want to just further clarify. When we say to turn on a policy, very clear in what we, what we message, that it's, it's, the feedback we got from our teachers is, there's a difference between taking attendance and engagement, right? So it's easy for them to check in, turn on the camera, I'm here, and then turn off the camera for the rest of the lesson. So, so what has been communicated to families and students is strategic moments throughout the lesson where they are required to be on. Just like we're having a school committee here, and, and, and our vice chair said, keep cameras on while, you know, your president, turn them off and so forth. It's kind of the same thing, because what we was noticing is that it was very difficult for teachers to, to know if students were engaged when the cameras are on. That does not mean that there's not a, a cultural, cultural responsiveness to the requests. And hopefully, is our hope that teachers know their students and making sure they accommodate based on their living, a, a, a situation or anything other that might prevent them. Or we don't want them to feel uncomfortable being on screen because of, of, of a personal or home situation. But the, the expectation is that in strategic moments throughout the lesson, students are actually on and engaged in the lesson so that really, really teachers can get a pulse of how students are, and show that they learn.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I, I know that it wasn't meant with any type of like, any, any other thought other than that, I, I don't think. Now, I, I do just have a couple more questions. And it was the comment that I, I wrote down here, and it's more from Mr. Gonsalves, who brought it up. I assume as to what Mrs. Brunel brought up as well, like, there won't be smoking allowed at this facility, correct?
So we actually have a Board of Health regulation that there's, there's not supposed to be smoking within 20 feet of public buildings. I, I think that was more just an, a point that they have a kit, a trailer full of equipment that goes all the way down to trash receptacles, to ashtrays, to...
Yeah, I know, but like, state law prohibits any type of smoking on school property.
It does. So does local Board of Health regulations. I, I guess that the timing of that wasn't appropriate. It was just to show that the detail of all of the small things that they have accounted for.
Yep. And then it was mentioned that you have to be COVID negative to get in. What happens if you contract COVID when you're living there? Are you removed?
Yeah, so the state actually has isolation and recovery centers that are scattered throughout the state. And so if you live in a setting where you're not able to isolate, say, in other congregate settings. So if you were to live in, in the Laredo House or one of the family shelters that the state operates, and you become positive, the state will actually transport you to another facility. You're supervised, you're isolated, you're in your own space. And then when you are ready to exit, they'll bring you back to wherever you are. And so those are located in, in a variety of areas throughout the, you know, cities throughout the Commonwealth. And then the state actually reports to the Board of Health when somebody has been returned from one of those facilities.
Okay, and then, I mean, it was brought up that there would be some sort of security check or background check on individuals. I, I'm just wondering that process, because I didn't think, I, I didn't know if you could do actual background checks for people who are in transitional housing, if that was legal or not. I just, I, I thought you couldn't. Maybe I'm, I'm wrong. I'm not a lawyer, nor a housing expert or a transitional housing expert. But just, I mean, let's go back to that, because I need to know more about these background checks. And is it the district that's getting the information, or are we trusting another partner?
DHCD is going to handle the background checks. They screen and, and handle all of that. So the Board of Health or the school department is not going to be handling those sort of investigations. And so I can get the specifics as to what DHCD's process is for security. I don't, I don't have that specific protocol in front of me. But that's all handled by the state, as is essentially the running of the shelter. So the city is a partner in this, in the planning, you know, in the facility. But the actual day-to-day operations are going to be entirely manned and staffed by CSO, which is also which is also known as Friends of the Homeless, MEMA, DHCD, and then other partners that the state has.
Like I said, I, I fully, um, support helping out people in their time of need. Like, I, I get that and, and, and I, I fully understand that. And I, um, if, if schools are closed, I would definitely think differently about this. But I mean, that, as it's been brought up by a few people, that is an active school building. And I just, I, I'm really troubled, um, but I'm like, one hand, I'm really troubled with it, but I'm hearing that the receiver supports it. I'm assuming his superiors at ESE fully support this. Um, but it just, I feel as though that there's, could have been other school sites looked at. I, I just to have active students in there and we require so much, so much to enter a school building. And, and I know that there may be lockouts, there may be security. But already in my mind, I'm thinking about the, the pathways at Dean, um, from that, that building over to the main building. I mean, I just, I'm hard pressed to, to, to risk a guarantee. And, and I, I get it. And I, I get that we need to help people and I get the state of the pandemic. I fully understand it. I don't understand why it's a building with students, one of the few buildings with students in it, um, that's being utilized. I, I even think about, and not that I would necessarily even promote it as an option, but somewhere like Hoyoke High North, I mean, you could actually block off the entire top floor, um, with that gym facility. I mean, you just, it, it just troubles me about this. And I'm, I'm very interested to read the MOU, um, that came out. If, if I can get a copy of that or I can request a copy of that, I don't know who has that just to see what's in there. But I, um, as was mentioned, I, I mean, it, I just don't, for, the state has led me to believe not to trust the word temporary or short term. Um, and, and that just is, is very difficult for me to, to, to grasp around that because I, I, it just doesn't, it doesn't sit well. It doesn't sit right, um, to me, especially with the building with students in it. I think we need to help people. I think we need to, especially in this time of need, uh, we need to help people. But I just, um, it's really hard to, to have a building with, we aren't even talking Dean when it was nine through 12. Like, there are middle school students in that building. Um, and all students are, are important and worrisome, but it's sixth to 12th grade. I mean, it's, it, it's just, it's hard to, uh, understand, especially when they aren't meeting our same security protocols and our same requirements. I mean, are the employees that are working required to get fingerprinted like we require? Um, I mean, do they have to go on to the, I mean, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education makes someone that's going to have unsupervised, unmonitored contact with students to be fingerprinted? I mean, and vendors have to be fingerprinted or quarried. Are all of their employees meeting those requirements? I mean, and is the district 100% comfortable with the safety and of meeting those requirements up there? I mean, that's, that's my challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. So, um, any response to that question or was that just going to be a comment with?
I, I want, I, I, I will provide an updated report by the end of this week to the school committee on this, on this issue.
So regarding the fingerprinting and finding out that's kind of stuff?
And if there's additional questions that these members have, you know, overnight, please feel free to email me so that I can wrap the, a, a communication report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burks.
So I, I've heard multiple times, um, you know, Mayor Sean and also Dr. Vasquez all saying, um, this would be in place until the school is open. This school is open. There are students and staff in this building. This is a safety thing. And like Devin and like Aaron said, you know, we want to help. This isn't the right thing to do. We have the building that we purchased or we're renting for Blessed Sacrament. That's a big, open, empty building. You know, there are other options. Um, and for me, that's a concern. Like, I think that that's mind blowing. The other thing that's interesting is Sean, you had said, um, that people were going to be vaccinated and everything before they come into this. So how is it that we are going to be vaccinating them, but we can't vaccinate our teachers to get our students back into school? Like, that, that's kind of weird. Um, you know, that they would be vaccinated, but our teachers can't be vaccinated to bring our students back. Again, I think this is a public safety issue. I don't think that this is smart. I get and appreciate that, but it's the fact, like, how weird is that? That we are a school district that is desperate to get our students?
You're bandwidth. So you keep cutting off, Rebecca.
Try shutting your camera off for a second.
Ms. Burks, can you hear us? Start all over with that part because nobody heard you.
Oh.
Sorry, you said, "How can?" And that was a,
So I guess I'm just wondering, how can we as a district who is fighting to get our students back in person, fighting to get our, our teachers back in? You know, how can we, how can we vaccinate this population but not vaccinating our teachers? A, um, I, I don't think this is right. I think there's other options and we should be looking into them. And this, um, the one other piece that I will say, I will agree 100% with Aaron, is I took 100% insult to the fact that it's being brought up again. But we are a district, district in receivership. We are well aware of that. We know we are in receivership and we are fighting tooth and nail. And this is the second time that it's been brought up in a public meeting. And it's just wrong because we're all working for the one greater purpose, which is to make this better for our students and our families. And that's the key priority. Um, so we know we're in receivership. We don't need to, to be told, we know, we are aware and we are respectful of that. But this was clear tonight that this information has been going. These conversations have been going and we were not told anything. And we are the gatekeepers. We are elected officials responsible to our constituents, our families, our teachers and our students. And to have these conversations in the school committee to have no prior knowledge, and it sounds like it's pretty far along and planning is disturbing. And it's a disgrace. I'm highly insulted by it. Thank you.
Uh, so I, I, I need to, I need to, I need to kind of reply to that. At no time was I saying, using the word receivership in a disrespectful way. I was stating the fact. The question was, why didn't this come to a school committee for a decision? The statute is clear of who makes decisions of the operation. I was just making sure that we clarify the roles and responsibility. That, that's a fact. It is not used to be disrespectful or things of, or, or, um, trying to, you know, use, you know, the title. It, it, the question was asked, some, you know, why, you know, who made this decision on behalf of the school? And so the statute is clear of who is responsible of making those decisions. That's why it doesn't have to come to a school committee for a vote. Should it come, commit for an input? Absolutely. Um, but, you know, I just, I just was stating that as based on the facts, not to be disrespectful and not to kind of, you know, push back on, on, on the comments and the feedback I'm receiving. I am taking it all in, um, and, and taking notes. And I know my colleagues are, are as well. Because to your point, we are all in this together and that's how I, I, I see it.
So before this even goes any further and before anybody comments on that, I'm the one who's going to make the comment on that. Um, so, it's not in, how would I put this in a milder way? So what it is, Dr. Vasquez Matos, is that before, which I think we got a kind of, not think about before, the past, um, when we worked with our previous receiver, the relationship between the school committee and the receiver was very strong because whatever was going to impact this, our city, our families, um, our students, seeing us as their representatives, because obviously they were the ones who put us here into these positions, there was that mutual understanding of before it goes out and before you come to a full decision yourself, because obviously he was the receiver, he made the final decisions. We all talked about it first. So I know I, practically all of us here kind of got slapped in the face with something we weren't aware of. I guess, I'm not into rumors. I prefer to get it straight from, from the source, right? So when you're finding out out of nowhere and it's like, holy cow, that was happening? Um, why didn't anybody mention? It's like, if families start talking about it and then they're asking us, it's like saying, then what, what are you good for? You don't know anything, right? So it's kind of, again, out of mutual respect that even though we know we can't make that decision is about having those conversations about things that are going to be impacting our students, our families, our community, where we can all come together and kind of talk about it and be like, oh, I can see your point on that. Or maybe this might work better. And you may end up getting some feedback where you're like, you know what? That does sound better. But obviously it's going to be your decision at the end. So you get the kudo points at the end because it'll be your decision, you know? But the school committee was a part of it. And that's where, um, this kind of felt that disconnect. Um, and that's where we're, you're going to see people becoming emotional because it's like a feeling, there it goes again. It's receiver versus the school committee. And you know what? I don't want this district to end up like other districts like Lawrence. You know, whoever is going to tell me here in this meeting that in Lawrence, it's going great. Everybody's getting along and the school committee is doing marvelous things is lying. Because again, I don't go by rumors. I speak straight to the source. And so I don't want to become a Lawrence. I don't want to become a Southbridge. I want to stay Holyoke because again, we don't compare ourselves to other districts. So that's it on that. Um, obviously we weren't, we weren't part of it. We got it. He, he gets it. We're going to move on from that, um, at this point because if not, I'm probably going to get more heated and I'm going to have to start doing that whole woo-saw thing that I, that I posted on Facebook yesterday that I need to help myself before I overreact. We don't want to get there. So next is going to be Ms. Feliciano Sims.
Um, hi, thank you. So I just kind of want to like reiterate what my school committee members have said in regards to, you know, having the conversation about the homeless shelter in Dean. What I find interesting is that, um, Mr. R, Mayor Morris stated that, um, they had this conversation at the safety meeting, um, 1-6. Murphy brought this line item back in 1215-20, so that rate, so December 15th. He ordered that the mayor and the health director appear before the Public Safety Committee to provide an update on the potential for the city to establish a homeless shelter, potentially at the War Memorial. So between 1215 and 1-6, something changed, right? Like, all of a sudden Dean became that, like, that topic. And I think that's where we come back at. It's like saying, like, the school committee has not had, been aware of it. So does the city count? I'm just curious. You know, did that conversation be brought up, was brought up in, um, city council? And also like if we're choosing to do it at Dean, if that's the end case, would it be possible to move our students like into another school system? Like, is that something that we might potentially look at if Dean is the facility that is adequate enough for our community? Third question would be, um, is it, you guys said that it's open to the city. But again, if somebody is, has a hard time in Northampton, right? So like, and they move over here, will they have first priority before our families? So like, who's, what families will have priorities? Uh, or is it just catch-all? Like, if I, you know, I don't have children in the school district, let's say if something happened and I lost it, I'd be the person that I can go to?
So I, I can talk a little bit about the priorities. Priority is will be given to kind of, you know, HPS families are one of those or HPS members are one of those in the priority list. Um, and then, um, kind of case managed through different agencies, city agencies of how to support. Um, and Sean, if you want to add more to that?
Yeah, the intention here is that this shelter would cater, um, primarily to Holyoke families. So as Mayor Morris mentioned, um, in many cases, Holyoke residents go to Springfield or Northampton to seek services, um, at places like the Living Room because we, we don't have a shelter that caters, um, to individuals. Many of the, the shelters that we have in Holyoke, uh, the intake is a little bit more lengthy and complex or there are situational requirements, like there are women's shelters or there are family shelters or you have to have a steady source of income. And so this shelter, um, is a little bit different. The barriers to entry, um, are not as specific, but, uh, it is intended to specifically cater to Holyoke families. And we've had surveys in the past that have been undertaken by community development and other state agencies to sort of understand, um, the homeless population as it evolves and people who are, um, housing insecure. And, and so that's where some of the numbers are drawn from. But, uh, this will be primarily Holyoke. If there were to be anyone from another district, from, say Springfield or, or South Hadley, it would not be over, um, Holyoke families. But they also are not going to make up the majority of the population. If, if it's not utilized to its maximum extent, if there are only 10 people in there, um, could there be an opportunity for someone to come in there? Yes, but, uh, it, this is a Holyoke, this is specifically to address the needs that we're putting strain on, on other systems.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna, Mr. Chrisain.
Thanks. I, I just want to know what, um, what was presented to, I mean, we, we seem to be the last to know. I'm just wondering, has any statement been made to the teachers, administrators, um, the students at Dean and the STEM school? Um, I'm curious to know what their reaction has been. Have they had a chance to have any input in this and any of the decision-making? Um, and I'm, I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding how this program is in such dire need, but we don't know what the numbers are going to be. And it's going to be put together in a, you know, matter of weeks and then it's going to have to come down in a matter of weeks if it stays on this timeline. Um, just if you can address those, those questions.
So as to, as to the, the greater community, we are still, I mean, today was another planning meeting. We are, we are making sure that we continue the planning and all the answers and, and, and feedback we're getting from, um, you know, um, the team, um, before we go to the greater community, the, the greater community. Um, so we are still in the planning stages. The goal is actually to, to by the end of next week to, um, consult with and, and, and speak to the community, our, our district community, but also the greater community, um, citywide. Um, but that we are still in kind of that fine tuning, uh, phases of planning and so forth.
What, what about the folks right there at the school? What, have they had any input?
So I did meet with Dr. Mahoney. There was a meeting Friday, um, with Dr. Mahoney and, uh, the city team as well as other individuals from my cabinet to, um, be briefed on this.
But nobody else from the schools, like just, just Dr. Mahoney?
At, at this point, yes, because we have, we have to make sure we get all of the details correct.
Okay. And then this, this is going to come up and be put down so quickly. Just, and at the same time, we're trying to bring students into the school. It just seems like it's two opposite goals. And I, I'm just,
So looking at the timelines, will the middle school and the high school to come back? Now that we delayed it, will be towards the end of March, if, if, if you look at the three-week staggered approach.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
All right, I'm probably going to sound like the bad one right now because this is what I'm going to say. There's two more people before I even say anything. So I have allotted everybody the time to keep asking questions, okay? As long as we keep it civilized and as long as we are trying to ask questions that might help to improve something or to keep, if it's to keep repeating the same thing, then for Or to keep, if it's to keep repeating the same thing, then forget it, okay? Um, we all know that what, who wants what, who doesn't want what, what the feelings are. Um, but we need to kind of expand on this, go somewhere else if this is going to continue getting a bit heated. I'm sorry if I sound mean, rude, whatever, but Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, I, um, Dr. Rogers, I just want to go back to the point about cameras on. Um, I just want to be clear about the communication because it sounds like your intent is different than what's being communicated already by your staff. Um, so maybe some better communication between central office and staff. Because just today I alone got two messages from two separate teachers of my children informing us that, you know, on camera all day is a new district policy and then it's part of participation score. So if it is just a check-in thing or, you know, like you said, um, so I just want to be clear on communication. And then um, to my only other point I'll make is um, with regards to what may or may not happen at Dean, um, you know, I just, I feel like twice now in the school reopening phase process in um, delaying things, I feel like information comes out and then the community gets involved and then everything shifts. So perhaps moving forward, it, it'd be who of the decision makers to start to get that community and staff and district engagement before that final decision's made. So that way, when the final decision comes, it's not then altered. So that's my only advice moving forward with the Dean proposal is maybe instead of waiting till the, the proposal is finalized. Talk to staff, talk to parents, talk to community now, because what if the staff won't come to the building? You know, I don't know. I'm just saying, right? So rather than just get them informed and then get too much pushback and have to change, which tends to happen. Let's maybe start to try to work those, those extra members into the conversation before that final decision is made. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Um, before I, I say what I had to say or, or ask what I have to ask, because I've been writing all year. Um, I'm going to open it up to Mr. Collmore and Ms. Tensley Williams. If you have one more comment or statement, um, by all means, go ahead and star six right now. Say your, say what you've got to say. If not, I will then say what I gotta ask.
This comment is uh, to Dr. Vasquez Matos. Um, this is a little bit belated and was sorry to hear about your granddad. And um, our prayers will be going with you. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley Williams. Okay, so I've got several questions as you guys were talking. I'm writing and then whatever sounded like somebody already said, I'm not going to make it redundant. So.
Mr. Collmore.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Collmore. Sorry, I will not say anything anymore.
Yeah, uh, are we going to get an upgrade on everything that's going on about this situation? Uh, on a daily basis or at least a weekly basis of everything that's going on and letting us talk to you and uh, discuss this matter?
Yeah, so for, for this case, I will send uh, an update by the end of this, this week based on the questions. And anything that might come up within the next forty-eight hours that the school committee can email me or want to have a further conversation, I'll be more than happy to do that.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore. Okay, so I'm going to start with my first question. Um, if I can just get the response when I ask the first question. If not, I'm going to forget what I even asked you. Okay? So start date, what's the expected start date for the reopening? We know we, we, we pushed it.
Yep, we don't know that. We don't, we're, we're finalizing that. We are aiming for some time in February for the start date. That's us.
So with that being said, I'm gonna go into, when would families know?
So the goal is actually by end of this week and a middle of next week, families will know when will be that start date.
So if you were looking at starting mid-February to end of February, you're giving them a month to work with their jobs?
Yeah. And keeping in mind that we're looking at only the little ones first, so it's anywhere between pre-K to or might be that we do pre-K or K and that's what we're trying to finalize based on um, those commitment letters, the cohort letters that went out that they have until the end of the week to com- uh, complete them or opt out of um, remote, I mean, remote or hybrid. So we might see numbers change.
So you have some pre-K to two teachers that willingly, meaning they really want to come back. It's not, oh, I want to come back. I don't want to lose my job. Like, I don't want the stu- the, the staff to feel like if they don't come back, you're out of a job. You know, because they really love their students. They're thinking really about the safety, right? Which is where all of us should be at, where, where, our mindset should be, be at right now. So you're telling me that you have staff that at the bottom of their heart, they're like, I striving to go back to school. I want to be in there.
So I, I do have staff that want to come back and, and teach in person. We do have, again, uh, teachers who have submitted some type of accommodation, whether um, in the externity circumstances or whether it's a health risk that we would um, look at. Um, but we also have teachers, like the teachers have been teaching in person since September, who are willing to be in front of in-person learning. However, you know, look, we have to make sure also that, you know, that we have enough teachers to teach the students who have actually opted to remote. And so that requires conversations and making sure that teachers are ready to come back um, at the appropriate time to make sure that they, they teach. Um, but if there is accommodations required, requested, you know, the HR team um, sits with their principal and, and reviews them as they come in.
So um, from pre-K to two, about how many have you, how many letters have you gotten where families are saying, I want my child there in person?
Pre-K to two was four hundred and seventy-six that in the survey. I don't know about the letters yet. Maybe Val, do you have an update on the letters?
Hi, yes, we had uh, six hundred and sixty-one students from pre-K to grade two wanted to return to in-person learning. However, we do anticipate that those numbers will shift. Uh, this week, families in those grade levels are returning um, their, um, well, they don't have to return. They were given their cohort assignments last week. And if they wanted to change their cohort assignment, they had until Wednesday of this week to communicate that with the schools. And so we'll have updates, I would say mid-week next week as to whether those numbers shift or not. We need to give school time to collect those, that information and to log it and then we'll know if there's updates from there.
Okay. So currently I know that, like you said, you had about eight hundred students in the district that are currently in person. So that could be between transitions, whatever.
Yep.
About how many students are in each school?
Oof.
Properly average.
In each school, um, on a given.
The most.
Yeah, the high school. On a given day, they will have the most on a given day. Anywhere between sixty to eighty students on a given day.
Okay, great, because this eight hundred is in different cohorts, correct? Or is it just the cohort C where it's four times a week?
It's the cohort.
So cohort C?
Yep.
Okay, so and per classroom? So that's a good average.
Yeah, uh.
Look, I can, I can jump in, boss. So, so right now the average attendance is between six to eight students. The capacity in some of our rooms is up to twelve students. Um, but based on daily attendance, the average again is six to eight students in a classroom. Um, and, and you know, we look at, so cohort C, they're attending all four days, but just know that the difference is our dean campus. Our vocational students are also included in cohort C, but they're attending just one day a week by their, by their class. So seniors are one day, juniors the next, you know, sophomores and then freshmen. So they're the only group that does not actually attend all four days. They attend just one day.
Okay, um, so six to eight students currently, you could say that attend. So you, you have them in the class. So obviously they're six to, they're about six feet apart, right? When you get to the twelve students, are you looking at six feet or are you looking at three feet?
It's six feet.
Six feet. When you decide to start bringing more and more students back, how much are you looking at bringing into a classroom?
It's, it's still, it's still at that capacity that Mary, um, uh, Marion Carrier stated. It's still that number. That's, that's the number to have, we plan around, which is that capacity is twelve students and the, and also depending on the building, because some buildings have larger classroom space than others. So might allow for one or two or, or we might have to decrease one or two depending on the space. But every, every seat is six feet apart district-wide.
We're, we're built, we're building capacity based on each individual building. So we've done walkthroughs with our facility staff. Um, Sean and his team have been great with the board of health, um, doing the same thing. But um, within each of the classrooms, we are, we're continuing to maintain six foot, six feet of distancing. Um, you know, with, with our uh, re-entry planning, um, regardless of the, you know, age, grade level. What it's meant in some of our facilities is bringing in desks, um, and moving out tables so that we could maximize um, the space that we have in our classrooms. Um, but we are looking at it in, in every individual space to maintain that six-foot distancing.
Okay, so here are some of the things that I keep hearing. Um, and I guess this is where the frustration builds. A lot of times when we hear individuals from the district speaking, it kind of sounds like it's a, it's a broken record. It's like it's all recorded. It's like you practiced it twenty million times. That's what I hear. So I keep hearing the same thing. What would a schedule look like with this extended learning time? They don't want to know how many hours it is in a total day. They don't want to hear that in between there, you're going to have mass breaks, you're going to have lunch break. They want to see an actual, like, tell me what if, you know, from eight to eight fifty-three is going to be math. Then from eight fifty-four to nine oh four, you can have a break. I know you're, you're raising your hand, Valerie. Please do not tell me that in between there's going to be mass breaks and, and food break and stretch this break. Good morning break. Give me some actual numbers.
There's going to be all of that. There's going to be all of that. Um, so we can post some samples. I was working with Judy Taylor and her and I meet on Fridays. And we'll put a couple of samples up there. Our schools are really busy creating those schedules and they're very individualized by grade level and by school. And so what we're doing is we're going to just pull some of that. And in the next week or so, we'll have that posted so that people could see a sample of an, of, of a couple of different grade levels. But that's just going to be a sample because it's very specific to each school. And so more specific details can be shared with families from their, their child schools.
Okay, because I mean, that's, you want to see something that's, that I can physically view to justify something, right? So like Worcester, for the Worcester School District, I did see someone post and I physically saw what it is that they were going to be doing at each time for middle school, for high school, for elementary. And what, what the teachers were even going to do for prep time. So you got, it's, so when families are asking these questions, we kind of have to respond to them exactly what they want to know. It's not a generalized or this is kind of what we're looking at. Um, so that's that. Now, I keep hearing, and Sean, this is going to be you. A lot of times report, who, by the way, who gives you the contact tracing? Who tells you who that person was in contact with? So then, then you do the contact tracing.
So the school nurses at the facility, I, I guess you're talking about in the context of schools, right?
Right, context of schools.
The school nurses work with the people in the building. And then they also work with the parents um, of the students. So you speak to the students, you speak to the teachers, you speak to admin staff, you speak to custodians, you speak to uh, the, you know, sedexo folks in the, in the kitchens or making the food, everybody. They work with the nurses. The nurses report to Cynthia. Cynthia and the nurses collaborate, share information, make sure everything makes sense. They work with Debbie, who is the public health nurse in my office. And then Debbie and Sandra, who is a, a, a full-time employee in the nurse's office to help her with things like this. They share that information if additional calls need to be made on top of what the, the school is doing. So for instance, if, you know, I was a child in a classroom and I had siblings who were in a daycare and I was exposed or I was positive, we make the calls to the daycare. We make the calls to aunts and uncles that may babysit during the week, to grandparents, to uh, maybe there's a, a parent that doesn't live in the household because, you know, the, for whatever reason. So we make all those calls. The school makes many of those calls with the information that they have on hand. And then additionally, um, we share some of that information with the contact tracing collaborative in certain cases. And they will also make calls. So if we have a daycare, um, there are a lot of calls to make when a daycare has a potential exposure. Say a student is in school a couple of days, but they go to a daycare. And so they'll share some of those responsibilities. But in the schools, it starts with the nurses that are at the school. And then Cynthia and then Debbie. And then we handle some of that in our office, but it's an established chain, starting with the nurses first.
So with that being said, I keep hearing this fifteen-minute exposure time. Well, you don't have to, you don't have to include someone in a contact trace because they didn't have more than fifteen minutes of exposure time. What's your two cents on the exposure time, Mr. Gonzalez?
Okay, so my two cents is, um, the Department of Public Health and DESI, you know, the, the established exposure period is what they call extended time is fifteen minutes. But there have also been, the CDC has um, defined a close contact in certain scenarios can also be considered um, fifteen minutes of cumulative contact i- over a period of time. And so we've looked at that as well and we don't, we try to adhere to protocol in order to establish consistency, but we don't let protocol give us tunnel vision. If there is a circumstance where somebody had repeated short-term exposure to um, a person who was positive, we're not going to say, well, it wasn't exactly fifteen minutes and one second, so don't worry about it. You know, we, in some cases, you're going to round up. In some cases, you're going to make a decision um, out of an abundance of caution. So when we closed uh, one of the schools right before Christmas, uh, Dean, I believe we closed. That was done not because there was an immediate need to close that school. That was done out of an abundance of caution, because until we could gather all the information, we'd rather skip two days of potential in-person learning and make sure that we tied up all of the loose ends than say, wow, we, we got most of them and then figure it out as we go. So we really try to take, we follow the protocol we've set, but if there are extenuating circumstances, if there are people who are waiting on a test that we're going to find out about, say tomorrow morning, we'll take that extra step to hold people out or uh, have people wait until we can get more answers. And we try to respond as necessary, but we always start with the protocol we have in place.
I just want to make sure that questions are being asked, interviews are being done and it's not being, it's not being picked and chosen as to who's gonna, how that interview is going to go um, based on exposure time. Because like I was telling someone today, one of my colleagues, nursing colleagues, if I'm in a vehicle with someone, right? Say the person, nobody knows. I don't know. They, they start coughing. A lot of times, just out of nowhere, we like remove our mask to cough. It's like, we don't want to cough inside the mask. So.
Or sneeze.
Or cough, or sneeze. So you remove it without even thinking.
Yep.
COVID does not say, well, you weren't in the car for more than fifteen minutes. She got out the car in ten. So you are safe. You don't have to worry. But yet the sneeze went right in my face. Okay?
We, we would never.
We've got to make sure that everybody is not, don't base it on your judgment. Um, make sure that you ask all the questions and if it was only five minutes exposure time, but there was direct care with the possibility. of, of a direct impact, you should be reporting it. And you should make sure that that person is going to be contact traced.
Sure.
That's just what I want to make sure that we are doing.
So one hundred percent, we take in situational, we'll say, you know, extenuating circumstance, I guess is the best way. Not everything is cut and dry textbook definition, and we try to account for all of those. I would also say we put an emphasis on trying to accommodate people's language. So if Spanish is a language you're more comfortable with, one of the reasons we bought, brought Sandra into the office is Spanish is her first language. And so we have someone in the office, full-time, every day, doing contact tracing, working with the nurse, who speaks Spanish. So you have Spanish-speaking nurses in the school. You also have a Spanish-speaking medical person in our office. So you can make sure that you don't miss details due to a, a language difficulty or a barrier. And then the state also offers translation services for some of the other languages that, you know, we don't have in the office. Though I will say some of the school nurses also speak a variety of languages like Russian. So they're helpful there too. So that, you know, there's a focus on, on making sure there's clarity in the questions that we ask. And then, like I said, we, we try to react appropriately, but also always putting safety and caution first. And so we, we just dealt with another situation the other day where there was out, you know, that you had an exposure, but then you had outside exposure involved as well because someone was in another building. And we try to get on top of that as soon as possible. You don't have one person call and put those other people wait. You have two people call to make sure that both buildings are being addressed right away. And then you coordinate by email, by text, by phone. We know what's happening, the nurses know what's happening, and then we're both working on it at the same time. So we have, I, I don't want to, you know, toot our own horn here, but I, I really am very proud. And I just want to underscore at how comprehensive and, and detail-oriented that we've been able to be. And it, it's mostly due to the nurses, you know, Debbie and, and Sandra and Cynthia and, and the whole crew there. They really stepped it up and, and made sure that nothing is overlooked and that people aren't forgotten or that details aren't, aren't brushed aside. Because we'll spend hours working on one case. Because you want to make sure that you don't miss something or you don't miss somebody, an aunt or a, a friend that came over after school or a, you know, a play date after school with, with a, a classmate, right? And so we really do take the time and the nurses spend Saturdays, Sundays, holidays. I mean, Sandra in our office called Cynthia on, you know, Christmas to talk about school-related cases because we don't want to miss anything and it's time-sensitive. So I just want to thank them while I have this opportunity. Um, and, and one way I can thank them is by explaining how exhaustive their contact tracing work is.
Thank you very much. So I've looked at these numbers, I looked at the DESI site today, and I see the numbers increasing, especially for students. And at the beginning of this pandemic and even towards the middle, people kept saying, kids don't get it. Kids don't get it, you know, they're never going to get it. But why is that? It's because we shut down the schools back in March thirteenth. Schools started shutting down across the United States. Um, states started shutting down as well. So yes, obviously, they're not going to get it. Why? Because they're home. There's nowhere to go, okay? But now, as they start coming out and they're coming to school, the numbers that are coming into DESI, now whether it's accurate or they're keeping it at a minimum, I'm still looking at up until December sixteen, so in a one-week period from December tenth to December sixteenth, for the public schools alone statewide, it was five hundred and seventy-two in-person students that tested positive in one week. You might say, well, that's not a lot. But we don't know how many were remote, right? Just like with our district. You said that from January first to the seventh is thirty-five remote. One in-person student, five in-person staff totaling, what, forty-one? So these numbers are only going to keep increasing, obviously, until we start doing vaccinating, right? With the hopes that hopefully people don't think that if you get the vaccine, now all of a sudden you're immune, you can go ahead, take your mask off. Because also, please, you're not helping anything, you're going to just make it worse. Um, so make sure you still wear your mask and you still follow social distancing. There's still protocols that have to stay in place. But these numbers, again, continue to go up. Hopefully, I'll see new numbers from DESI, but they're still missing twelve seventeen to twelve twenty-three. I don't know why. We need to start not thinking about always being better. Massachusetts has always had that, that ego. We've got to be better. So in education, we've got to be better. So we kind of put people, or whatever we have to do to be better, we will put it at risk, right? And we need to stop kind of thinking about that right now. Because right now, everybody's going through this pandemic. What is everybody's first thing right now is survival. It could be in the means of hoping to not get it because you don't know how your body's going to respond. It's going to be in the hopes of maintaining your job if you still have it, right? So you can support your family, keep a roof over their heads, keep food on the table. Many families are struggling figuring out whether they're going to have a job when one week we're, we're at work. The next week, I got to stay out of work because now this happened, that happened. We've, nobody's putting them, their, their needs into mind. We're just thinking about, let's get the kids back into school, but you don't even know if that's going to last a week. That could only last two days, and now what happens? We're back to square one. We've got to shut down for two days, we got to do a cleaning here. This parent now has to tell their boss. There's too much of transitioning and constant changing because this pandemic is still not under control. Am I right, Sean? The pandemic's not under control. It's only getting worse. There's still, I mean, just because you got your first vaccine, you're only at fifty percent efficacy. You still need the second, but then you have to wait another week to fourteen days, depending on which one you have, to see if you're part of that ninety-four, ninety-five percent that you might be protected from this virus. And it doesn't mean that you will never get it because it's just like the flu vaccine. You can still get the flu. So you can still become contagious and spread it to others. This is, this is just like everything else. So I don't want people's hopes to think like you're, you're never going to catch COVID. Um, so I mean, my, this is what bothers me. This is what I'm thinking. God forbid that it's a student whose grandmother or grandparent is the one that's raising them. That's all they have. You know, they don't have any other family. Or maybe no other family can take that child in. They start going back to school, they become an asymptomatic carrier and bring it home to their vulnerable grandparent. Now something happens to that grandparent. Does anybody know where this child's going after that? Does anybody ever stop to think where the child would end up? Sure as heck ain't going to end up at home because he ain't got a home now. He's going to end up in DCF custody and he's going to be moved around to see whether or not they can find placement for this poor child. So now we're, we, we're potentially destroying lives at the same time. I can't go to bed at night. So like I said, this is my own personal opinion. Um, people may like it, people, there's going to be people that like it, people that don't like it. And I guess it's because I work it, I see it, um, I've seen what it does. I'm tired of being COVID-tested every three days. Um, because that's how many positives keep coming back. It's not like I can go a day without a darn positive. Um. But I can't see us going, bringing kids back now. It's as if the year is almost towards the end. We're already in January going, I mean, the year is already starting off quick. Pretty soon, we're going to be in February. For three, two, three months, we're going to start making disruptions, changes. Everybody got accustomed to one thing, now we're changing it again with the hopes that it doesn't have to change again, but with the highest possibility that it will. I mean, it's not my decision, it never will be my decision because again, um, I'm not even going to say the word, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's not our decision. So I just hope that people, when they're making these decisions, even at the state level, DESI, that they're really taking into account and knowing that your remote numbers will now become your in-person numbers. That's not, never going to go away. So now you're going to double, triple, quadruple. So that's my comment to end it. And I, and nobody else has their hand raised, thank God. And I know you guys have had a long night. We've talked a lot about this and there's a lot to think about, so I thank you all. Um, was there anything else, Dr. Vasquez Matos?
No, that is it, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Who?
Sean has his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Sean, go ahead.
If, if I just, if I could, to, just to respond, I know, you know, what you said, uh, kind of, some of these questions that people have had were rhetorical. And I, I just want, while I have this opportunity and sort of in closing, we collaborate with the schools, um, you know, as a partner. And we try to look at all of the data, look at the individual perspectives. You know, I have, I, I do not have children, but I have parents of children, school-aged children in my office who offer perspective. I have, you know, someone in my office who just got out of college. I, you know, we're not trying to gamble with the safety of students or teachers. My grandmother was an educator in Springfield and Westfield and Granville for many years. My aunt is a teacher in college. We're not trying to put people at risk. I think what we're doing with public health is, you know, public health is not only communicable disease response. It's not only a pandemic response. It ranges into mental health, it ranges into outcomes, it ranges into, you know, even food security, you know, handling many aspects of, of life for kids. And so we're trying to adapt to an established need that I think we can all see. Um, and I, I do realize that some of the complexities in addressing that mean that people are going to feel pressure or people are going to feel uncomfortable. And so we, we don't do this to be wanton or, or just to try something randomly. We really just think that there are families out there that may not be able to provide right now a safe or constructive learning environment. And then in some cases, the schools may be a better, more comfortable and possibly safer environment. And so we're trying to meet those needs in a phased, really heavily observed and, and choreographed way. And so I do understand, um, the, the concerns that we hear and, and parents' concerns and teachers' concerns. And we share the concern, you know, we don't do this saying, this is a hundred percent going to work. But we also just want to make sure that we don't become stagnant and that we don't ever change or divert and only say, you know, no, no, no. Because you might overlook an opportunity to improve the situation a little bit. So I just, I don't want people to think that we're just rolling the dice on this. We really spent many, many hours looking at this and planning and reviewing and self-correcting and auditing. And, you know, no matter what we choose to do in the following weeks, you know, the Board of Health is going to be auditing these schools. We're going to be there in person, we're going to be looking to make improvements. And, um, you know, we, we just want to make sure that we continue to provide opportunities to, to help. And, and sometimes, um, changing what you're doing can offer that opportunity, but it also can provide, um, different risks than the current plan in place.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. So if there's something else, um, um, Dr. Vasquez Matos, we'll move on to new business. Minutes of meetings, regular, um, is there a motion to accept? So I have a motion second.
Second.
Second. Okay, got a motion in a second. Um, Liz, roll call, please.
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Lefave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mrs. Brunel, uh, Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Tensley-Williams? Yes, ma'am.
Rosalie, go mute, Rosalie.
Yes.
You just, okay, great, can you just put on mute now, sorry?
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Okay, let me do this. Member Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Member Willahen?
Yes.
Member Collmore? Star six, Mr. Collmore? Member Krishane? Gone?
Yeah.
Um, okay, good.
I. Hey, good. I. Oh, I.
Is that a yes, Mr. Collmore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mute, please. Oh my God, I felt like I was in a time zone. Woo, all right, so motion passes unanimously, thank you. Any ongoing business? Not that I can see. Any announcements? Uh, Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, just want to remind families that they should have had, if they, or everyone should, but have a pandemic EBT card. Uh, it should have been reloaded for the months of October and November, I believe, should all be loaded on there for families. Um, I assume December's coming soon. Um, there, there's many families out there who indicate that it's something they don't need. Uh, but there are areas in need with it, even if you don't need it. Maybe you go shopping with it and donate, um, what you purchased with it to one of the food shelters. Uh, is always helpful. Um, if, if you don't need the, the money on the card, as every family gets it, um, in the city of Polio. So I would just encourage that, um, if you can do that to help out some of our shelters that need the, uh, food or give them a call and see what they need and, and figure that out with them, uh, might be helpful.
Thank you so much. Is there any other announcements? No further announcements, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion in a second, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lefave?
Yes.
Sorry, member Sheen?
Yes.
Member Brunel?
Yes.
Member Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, member Burks?
Yes.
Member Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Member Willahen?
Yes.
Member Collmore?
Yes.
Thank you, good job. Um, and Mr. Krishane's gone, all set.
So motion passes unanimously, thank you, everyone. I wish you all a good night. Um, the meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-three PM.